Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the Hingham School Committee meeting of October 7, 2019, two hour at 7:03 PM. Oh, two. First item is approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee planning session held on September 22, 2019.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Are you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, then nay, there's have it. Two point two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting with the unity, school committee with the unity meeting held on September 22, 2019.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, by here. Are you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, then nay, there's have it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on September 23, 2019.
Do I hear a second? Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee training session held on September 30, 2019.
Do I hear a second? Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes question, questions and comments as an agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and/or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on the, on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone on the audience that would like to speak this evening? Hang on, thank you. Item number four, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, briefly tonight, the, in your packets tonight, you do have a copy of the October one count, and is that, that is the account, that's the official count that we have for purposes of counting to the, to the Department of Education. You'll know, we've, we've stayed pretty consistent the last couple of times. Our overall enrollment, total K-12 in district right now is 4,094, which is an increase of 13 students from last year at this time. So it stayed right there at about that time. Okay? The other thing I will say with the MCAS and the accountability, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Foster Elementary School for being a school of recognition this year for 2019, for both high achievement and high growth, and so congratulate to the whole Foster community for that, for that effort. We also say that, I'll announce that the individual MCAS results will be mailed to parents this week, so they'll be coming this week. We're not going to speak more about results tonight, that'll come at a later meeting. The, that, so the full report of the school committee will be coming forth, forthcoming in November, but parents will begin to receive their individual student reports this week. Okay? You also, every year you take data regarding secondary classes of 25 or more, and in your packet you have item four, which is the high school, and then right after that we have the middle school classes that are over 25 in each class. I, I think the, the bigger results are on the bottom of the page where you see, where it starts at 12, 13, 13, 14, et cetera, gives you the percentage of classes that are above 25. And last year, 18, 19, we had 20 classes out of 345 at Hingham High School, which is 5.8 percent. This year, we have 32 over 25 out of the 339 offerings for 9.4 percent. I will say, that's substantially different than it was back in the 16, 17, 17, 18. 17, 18 had 19.3 percent, so much higher numbers back then, and that was pretty consistent. In fact, a high of 23.7 percent in 12, 13. So obviously, a much, much improved climate, the high school. At the middle school, very similar numbers for 19, 20. 21 courses out of 237 offerings for 8.8 percent are over 25, and that's compared to 7.5 percent in 18, 19. So those are the, the updates I have on enrollment and over 25. The last thing I have for you, I'll, I'll kind of combine if you don't mind. I never, I know you don't ever mind if I combine something. Just kind of the update on superintendent goals and activities, and, and so, as you know, you approved the, the five goals that were on my, on my list this year. I will just tell you that I'm making progress in each of the areas right now, we're addressing each one of the areas. What I do, just so that you know, is I'm starting this every month. I actually color code and I add evidence under each goal about the activities I've been doing, so this month it's red, and I have that, so next month I'll have a different color, so you'll be able to see the progression through the year. And so when we go through our eight or nine months together before evaluation time, you'll be able to get that document in front of you, you'll see the progression through month to month that we've addressed these goals. But lots of going on, particularly in the end of, as I said, I would give you an update on the new superintendent induction program to date, and that's my number one goal on the, for professional practice. To date, I've attended several full-day NSIP workshops, those in July, August, and October. I've met with the mentor and coach, Maureen La Croix, in July, August, twice in September, twice in October, and then, I'm sorry, once in October so far, again, next week, we'll get Maureen again, so that's going well. And I've also conducted dozens of interviews with students, staff, administrators, and all the members of the school committee on the things that I'm working for induction. So we're making great progress on that. Some of the exciting things that I've been able to do in schools, and I mentioned the last time, we've started now the, the Student Superintendent Leadership Council, and I'm very excited about that, the feedback's been very good, of talking with students at the high school this year, and looking for more opportunities, and I'll continue to do that, for more opportunities to converse with students about their perception of how things are going in Hingham Public Schools. At the same time, we're also doing, we have a couple of coffees coming up, I know we have one day and one at night for coffee and conversation with superintendent, which really is designed for me to get feedback from the community regarding the operations of, of Hingham Schools. So we're, we're doing a lot of work and we're progressing, so I'm making great gains in both, both sides of both the, the goals and activities as well as the induction program. So.
Well, Dr. Austin, thank you. I commend you for all the great work that you have been doing, such as short term. I heard there are a lot of positive comments from your attendance in few events, one in the sports event, and the other one is at the coaches positivity workshop that was held last week at the Mira School, so that is great. And also, we appreciate the fact that you're taking one step to keep us up to date with the evaluation. I think that is a great way of start, you know, start the year, so that way, we don't have to wait, you know, six months to see progress. So, thank you. Is there any discussion or comments from my fellow school committee members on the superintendent report? All right.
Thank you.
Communications, item five, 5.1 communications received by the superintendent.
I have none.
5.2, student communication, welcome, Emma.
First off, on a StuCo front, the club has decided to dedicate this year's fundraising to the Allison Clark Memorial Scholarship Fund. This past weekend, with students canning outside of local stores in like Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts, they raised $800 to add to the $300 raised from the parent night, the parent teacher night at the high school. Our goal is to raise $10,000 this year, so we're able to donate it at the end of the year. Thanks to our Red Cross Club, we had a successful blood drive on October 2. The mentor program had a trivia night with the ninth graders and their upperclassmen leaders to build an inclusive school environment and an easier transition for the freshmen. The kindness club teamed up with the foster school students to decorate lunch bags and create a smile on the kids' faces. This past Friday, the boys and girls soccer programs hosted a doubleheader for Matty's Promise, a nonprofit organization. The bleachers field and even sky was filled with purple, leading to a very successful night for both teams and raising over $50,000 for a rare pediatric cancer nonprofit organization. The athletic department, including Coach Q, created an app called Big Red, where points are given for events that are attended, and at the end, there'll be a prize for the person with the most points. And basically, how you check into the games is off your location on your phone, so you click that you're at the field, and it won't give you the points unless you're actually there. The dance team slashed the trash two weeks ago and continue their streak at first place. And lastly, homecoming is this Friday and Saturday, with volleyball starts it off on Friday night against Ducksbury. Well, field hockey will play at nine, girls soccer will play at 11, boys soccer will play at 1, and football at 3 on Saturday.
Awesome, thank you. Did you have a game tonight?
Yeah.
Did you win?
No, we tied 0-0.
Well, you won 7-0 against Plymouth South
Yeah.
Last week. Great, thank you.
Can I, can I just add something to that?
Sure.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong. So, the Big Red program is not just for athletic events, but it's for all events.
Yeah.
So if you attend a concert, a play, anything, so it's not just sports. We want to, we want to have school spirit across the board, correct? Okay.
Yeah, there should be a night the other night with points.
Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Other communications. Hang on. All right, item six, unfinished business. To discuss a proposal revision of the Hingham Public Schools Policy 3.7.4, order of business and agenda, and act as appropriate. So if you want to, this, the policy revision provides for more flexibility, example, order of items, add in consent agenda, items, et cetera, in the development of, of the agenda to reflect our work together. This is a second reading of the policy, and I recommend, you know, it is a recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee vote to approve and adopt the Hingham Public Schools Policy 3.7.4, order of business and agenda. Is that anything you would like to add as the chair of policy?
No, that's pretty much it. It just gives more flexibility to the superintendent and the chair when they're doing the agenda, so I can make a motion.
That would be great.
To approve the proposed revision of the HPS Policy 3.7.4, order of business and agenda and act as appropriate.
Do I hear a second? Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, motion passed. 6.2, to discuss a proposed revision of HPS Policy 3.7.5, public involvement and act as appropriate.
Okay, so this, this one revises the policy to bring it in line with best practice and some law requirements for public involvement at school committee meetings. It's the second reading. I did want to make one proposal on this one. We're going to talk about this a little later, but for members of the public that are here, we had, the Mass Association of School Committees came in and did a workshop with us last Monday, and we talked about, a lot of districts, as best practices, have workshops in addition to the regular business meetings, so they're still posted, they're still open to the public, but they're not necessarily on camera. So our policy currently reads that everything is on camera right now. So I was going to suggest, and we can, if you, if everyone's more comfortable, we can wait till the next meeting to, to decide, but I was going to suggest that, let me pull The second sentence of the first paragraph, oh, sorry, no, the, the second sentence, it's a "school committee meetings will be televised for greater public access to the extent that resources allow." I was going to suggest that we change that to "school committee business meetings be televised," so anything like this would always be on camera. But if we did a workshop, it would give us more flexibility, so I don't know what everyone thinks about that.
Do you feel we are ready to vote on this? This is, since is the second reading?
I would suggest that this be postponed. There's two of the seven members aren't here tonight, and I think their input is, is important.
So let's table this one.
That's fine, yeah.
Until the next meeting, that's not a problem, at all. All right, so let's move on to 6.4. Do I hear, can I get a motion to discuss the proposed revision of HPS Policy 6.3B, children in foster care and act as appropriate?
Homeless first.
You're skipping 6.3.
Isn't that the one we just tabled?
No.
Just tabled.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let me fix this, hold on. All right, so let's do, so 6.3, right?
Mm-hmm.
6.2.
6.2?
No, 6.3.
6.3.
Hmm. To discuss the proposed revision of HPS Policy 6.3.3A, homeless students and act as appropriate.
Okay, I can make a motion to, to accept the proposed revision to HPS Policy 6.3A, homeless students.
Do I hear a second? Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's have it. Item 6.4, can I have a motion to discuss a proposed revision of the HPS Policy 6.3B, children in foster care and act as appropriate?
I can make a motion to accept the proposed revision to HPS Policy 6.3B, children in foster care.
Do I hear a second? Are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, motion passed. Item 6.5, to discuss a proposed revision of HPS Policy 6.8, athletic participation restriction and act as appropriate. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed revision of HPS Policy 6.8, athletic participation restrictions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are you in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item seven, new business. To receive the Hingham Mira School Improvement Plan for 2019, 2020, and an update of the 2018, 2019 plan progress. I want to welcome the leadership from the Mira, Hingham Mira School. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for inviting us here. I want to take a moment just to thank you for the kind words about Lucy Ward at the start of this meeting. Obviously, last week was a difficult week for the Hingham Middle School, and, you know, we've suffered more than our fair share of loss this year already, so, you know, it, it means a lot that you acknowledge the work and dedication of someone like Lucy. It's, it really is, she was a special person, so thank you for taking the time. I also want to thank the overwhelming number of teachers who came out tonight to, to hear our progress. Someone suggested to me last year, you know, if the teachers knew that these presentations were coming up, some of them might actually come and hear it, and clearly, there's nothing good on television tonight, so we've got a packed house. I really do appreciate it. You know, it is, the fact is, we present these plans each year, and then they go and make them realities. So I want to thank them in front of all of you for, for the work they do every single day. I'm a very fortunate person to, to get to work with all of them. Unfortunately, our technology is not going to cooperate with me this evening. We have a fabulous presentation that would knock your socks off if you could actually see it, but we're unable to display it. So what I will do is, I will share the slides with you after this so that you can review them on your own. But essentially, what we have are two slides that will go through the goals that we established for last year, and I'll discuss the progress made on those goals, and then we'll have an overview of the plan that was developed last year for this coming school year. Yes?
If you want to take the taco, you can actually plug this in, right into your computer, if you want to give it.
Want to give it a try?
Yeah, just hand it in your computer, and I'll go from up here.
All right.
But that means we're taking the agenda off.
That's okay.
Off.
It also means that you're going to see, you know, the Emperor's new clothes. It's really not that great of a presentation, but that's.
Now that you've said it's such an outstanding presentation, do you give me no choice? That up. Think this before we work if I'm going to guess. That's what I say.
Yeah.
Doesn't that do that?
Chromebooks are a little tricky.
I can see that.
Do we have an import on the other side? I don't think we have anything that matches that.
Well, never mind, it was a good thought.
So I'm off the hook again, thank you very much, Dr. Austin.
It was a good thought.
It was a great thought. In all seriousness, you know, the, the presentation, what you'll be missing out are some great pictures of our students participating in a special week that we had just two weeks ago. But, to our council report, for the 2018, 2019 school year, we had established four goals, the first being the goal of providing students with the tools and supports needed to grow into compassionate, caring, resilient learners capable of taking care of themselves and others. And that goes along with the social-emotional learning that the district has been so focused on for the past few years. Some of the work that we were able to accomplish last year in, in moving towards meeting that goal, is we explored the possibility of scheduling change that would give some more flex time in our schedule. We talked about having an opportunity where kids could go into a tier-two type support for social-emotional supports, also for academic supports. We looked at some existing schedules in surrounding districts, talked to them about what had been working for them, and we are looking at a framework that we'd like to try to pilot the second half of this school year, given the first half of the year as an opportunity to prepare the faculty for that type of scheduling change, and also look at what types of interventions are going to be most beneficial, both academic and social-emotional. We've also established a series of assemblies and presentations for our students because we have yet to find a social-emotional curriculum that fits with the middle school set. The secondary curriculums really don't seem to hit all the, the marks that we're hoping to accomplish with our kids. So we decided that we'd look at, you know, character traits and qualities that we really wanted to work on with our kids. And at each grade level, we had a series of assemblies last year, and we plan to continue that this year. For example, in grade six, we had assemblies where we discussed the importance of compassion and determination. And when you walk into the middle school, you'll see a series of banners with those characteristics and quality. We tied those assemblies to those characteristics and issued challenges to the students each time we had one. We had, the, the strongest example I can think of was our assembly on compassion, and from that, we asked the kids to, to think about others, and, you know, the true meaning of compassion is to understand someone else's suffering. So it was around the holiday time, and we had a penny war with our grade six students, where we asked kids to just donate their spare change for a week, and teams competed against each other to see how, you know, make it a little bit more interesting. We thought we'd raise a couple of hundred dollars that could go towards our gift card program for families of the Hingham Middle School community. The kids in a week raised thousands of dollars in spare change. It was amazing, and we really were able to make a difference in, in the lives of a number of Hingham Middle School families. And that, to me, is the most important thing, is that we're helping people who are part of us, part of our community. So we had those assemblies. We also took part in things like our Start With Hello Week, which you'll hear more about in just a few moments, and School Inclusion Week, where we look to make sure that all students feel connected to our school. We understand that the most important thing that we can do is make sure that every student feels like Hingham Middle School is their place, where they belong. And those weeks, while they are, they can be a little gimmicky and a little silly, it gives us an anchor to go back to when we're talking about what it means to be a Hingham Middle School community member. Our second goal was to expand science, technology, and computer science experiences and opportunities for students in and out of the classroom. Now, we continue to hope to, at some point, have an actual computer science instruction class at the middle school. That was something that we had hoped to work towards last year. We are tabling that for now, we're going to come back to that. Obviously, you know, that would, that would require a significant change in staffing and curriculum, and that wasn't something that we were ready to undertake last year. However, we were able to expand, expand our STEM program. Previously, it had only been grade six students. We added seventh and eighth grade STEM classes last year, they were elective courses. We were able to reach 100 additional students through those elective courses last year. We have them back in place this year. Some trends that we noticed is that the demand for STEM in eighth grade was not as great this year as it was for our kids going into seventh grade. We think that that's because, as seventh graders, they had that opportunity already. So we're going to continue to look at where the greatest demand is and move the teaching resources towards that as, as we go forward. We assessed our one-to-one computing initiative through a parent survey. Oh, look at that. So here we are. Thank you, Dr. Austin. We assessed our one-to-one computing initiative through a parent survey, and we're still going through some of that data. Things that stood out, though, one of the things that parents were most enthusiastic about was when we had the opportunity to sell those used Chromebooks to our graduating eighth graders for a nominal fee. We've been able to do that twice so far, and hopefully, that's something that makes itself another possibility in the future. Kids really grow to rely on those, and when they move from the middle school to the high school, they miss them. So that was a, a strong message from the parents. Another thing that we heard about was the repair time. You know, the devices are great, but they're not the most rugged computers you'll ever get. So quite a few students have to have them sent out for repairs, we do as much in-house repair as possible, but it can take weeks, and kids really, like I said before, they come to rely on those, and when they don't have those devices, it really impacts their ability to participate in the classroom. So we're going to work to get that turnaround time a little bit faster. And also, we, we look to expand our after-school activities in the realms of science and technology. We have finally been able to make our coding club an actual funded club at the middle school, that's open to all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, and that runs throughout the year. We have our Lego Robotics Club, which has been in place for a few years now, that's a very heavily attended organization that also feeds into our Future Cities Program, where students design a city of the future that has to address a single issue. In the past, it's been rubbish removal, or I think this year it's clean water. So how do you design a city that addresses the need for clean drinking water? And we have a very active green team. The green team, those advisors have done that on a voluntary basis for the past five or six years now. They recognize the need for that and continue to, to give of themselves in their time. So those activities beyond the school day are great opportunities to expand on the science activities.
I remember that must be three years.
Oh, you're go, you're good right there. I'll give you the, I'll give you the nod.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be like a well-oiled machine by the time we're done here.
All right.
All right. Still, in 2018, 2019, we had the goal of assisting students in making healthy choices and developing positive personal habits for now and the future. In order to move towards that goal, we conducted the Youth Risk Behavior Survey again last year with our grade seven students, and we're going to be analyzing that information to inform instructional choices this year, looking at trends of decisions that students are making that could lead to problems. And we also, again, participate in the ESPT, that's the Survey Brief Interview and Referral for Treatment Program. This is state mandated, all seventh, and I believe 10th graders have to take part in this survey at some point, where it's an anonymous survey with just a handful of items, the school nurse has implemented, and it is to assess the risk for getting involved in controlled substances. It's really came out of the opioid crisis a few years ago, so we use that data, while we don't have, we don't associate a name with the results, we do use that data to make sure that we are addressing trends in student behavior. We've made sure that our health curriculum is up to date. We hired a new health teacher last year, and she and Karen Beatty worked together last year to introduce new topics to the health curriculum that are more in keeping with the needs of middle school students. We're looking to expand on those topics this year. Healthy choices, not just in terms of, of diet and exercise, but also in relationships and how we treat one another. In our Derek classes, Officer Ramsey is here, he can attest to this, always on the forefront of, of taking care of kids and making sure that they are making good and healthy choices, and we look to provide parent education opportunities on teen health topics. Again, one of the things that stood out last year and continues to be a concern this year is the increase in vaping among middle school students. We do not see much of that at the school, but that does not mean it does not happen. That's the problem, is that it is so difficult to catch students who are making these decisions and engaging in this behavior. It almost becomes like a game where if you can get away with it without getting caught, it's a badge of honor. One of the things, one of the takeaways from the work that we've done, and I attribute this to the stuff that Officer Ramsey starts in grade six, is when we hear about these things at the administrative level, it's usually from another student who's heard about or witnessed something that they're not comfortable with. It's not a matter of wanting to get someone in trouble, it's almost always somebody who's concerned about a friend, and they'll let us know anonymously, and we're able to give that student support and reach out to the families, even if it's not something that's taking place in school, something that, that they hear about in the neighborhood and, or, you know, outside of school where there's little or no adult supervision. The fact that they trust the faculty in the middle school is really a testament to these people here. That's not something that happens in, with 11 to 14-year-olds easily. So that's, that's one of the big takeaways for me from that, from the work we've done there. Our final goal from last year was to provide students, teachers, and parents the tools, information, and experiences needed to make the transition from elementary to middle school, something that we revisit every few years or so, because that is, in my opinion, the biggest educational transition students go through, bigger than going from middle school to high school, bigger than going from high school to college. It's, it's a light year leap between fifth and sixth grade. So we, we do come back to that transition every few years. So, we do come back to that transition every few years to make sure that we're all up to date. We review our materials, as we did last year, to make sure that the information that our elementary school colleagues have is current and that they have a good understanding of what we're doing at the middle school. We make sure that the evening information sessions for fifth-grade parents are well-publicized and well-attended. We have our fifth-grade move-up day in May. And as I mentioned previously at another school committee meeting, we've also added in some informal building visitation days over the summer for students who might need one more opportunity to get through the door. We have our own Mrs. Gustafson, who greets them, guides them through the building. Nobody is more welcoming than June Gustafson. So, to have her there for a series of Thursdays in the summer is exactly what some of our more anxious students need, just an opportunity to get in there. So, that was the work that we had done last year on those goals. If we could now move to the next slide, Dr. Austin, we can talk about what we hope to be doing this year and some of the steps we're going to take to achieve those goals. One of the things that we're going to be focusing on this year is the new civics standards for grade eight. And Mr. McCullough, one of our grade eight civics history teachers, is here. So, he's going to be hearing about what he'll be looking at over the course of this year. Obviously, the state adopted civics frameworks last year, and we will be making sure that we have curriculum and programs in place to be meeting those standards. One of the most exciting things, in my opinion, with those new standards is the civics engagement and the project-based learning that has to take place. I don't know that we're going to be moving forward at the state level with this this year, but there is going to be a time where grade eight students need to complete a service-type project. So, that's going to be something that we need to develop and work with the community in order to make that a meaningful experience for our kids. For the past several years, we've had our civics week at the middle school, which is a week of activities either here locally or in DC and Philadelphia, where students are learning about their role as citizens in the United States and their responsibility, their civic responsibilities. We have built that program over the past several years beyond just a field trip, beyond just visiting sites and museums, to actually understanding the process and understanding why it is important that they become involved in political and civics life. So, we're going to be working towards making sure that that curriculum is updated, is created, and implemented over the course of this year. And that's going to come from some professional development work on the part of the Social Studies Department, and also collaboration with other school districts who are working towards the same goal. We're providing supports to aid in the enhancement of inclusion education and cooperative instruction at the middle school. We were very fortunate to have an inclusion facilitator included in the budget last year, and we hired a very skilled educator who's going to be working with our teachers to make sure that the instruction taking place in the classroom is inclusive and meeting the needs of all learners. So, we are developing her role as we speak, but what we've seen her doing so far is going into a classroom where somebody may be facing a challenge, not feeling as though they're reaching a particular learner at their level or their learning style, and she's able to take an observational viewpoint and say, "Okay, I think that if you tried this approach with that student, you might see the results that you're looking for." So, we don't want to squander this opportunity. We want to make sure that we're getting the absolute most out of her. So, over the course of this year, the inclusion facilitator will be providing regular feedback to our teaching teams, whether it be an inclusion classroom with a regular education teacher and a special education teacher, or a classroom with students who have various learning styles or learning disabilities without the in-classroom support, in order to make sure that we're thinking in greater ways to reach students who may not access traditional learning styles. We are going to be providing collaborative time between the classroom and special education teachers. You know, we put teachers together and say, "Go co-teach," but there's not enough time in the day for them to sit and talk. So, we're looking for ways to give them opportunities to sit and look at the lesson planning that they have to do, look at the students that they have to work with, and make more informed decisions going forward. And one thing that we've talked about in every building, really, is giving teachers the opportunity to do more observation of their peers. So, we're really encouraging that at the middle school this year. If you want to go see a colleague teach something, whether it's in your discipline or not, we want to see you go and do that. We want to see if you're interested in how an art teacher approaches 25 students as opposed to your math class. Take a look at what they're doing, because there's something to be learned in every classroom from every teacher. We're looking to develop and implement supports to improve performance of students with disabilities on open response items in the Grade Eight Science, Technology, and Engineering MCAS. So, we've done a lot of work around math. We've done a lot of work around ELA. We have reading lab programs. We have math tutors. We've got a Title I math program. And the Science and Technology MCAS has been where we have not really placed a lot of emphasis in the previous years. And looking at some of the data, you know, our students with disabilities do not perform to the level as their peers without disabilities in grade eight. Our students with disabilities in the most, the last MCAS that we've analyzed data for, they only achieved 27% of the possible points available in open response questions. So, there's an opportunity to not just increase scores, because that's really not the most important thing to us at the middle school, but to improve the learning opportunities for our kids. So, over the course of this year, our science teachers, in conjunction with people from the high school, are going to be doing professional development work in the realm of responding to open response questions. There'll be a series of professional development workshops where we're looking at a model that the high school has had in place for a few years now and adapting it to the middle school, so that over the time that they're with us, they're going to have those skills developed, and it's going to make it even better for the high school teachers when they get them. Because that's what we're all about, is making things easier for the high school. Finally, for our goals this year, we want to expand and promote opportunities for parent and family engagement and involvement at the middle school. Middle school is where parents feel, you know, "I don't really know if I belong there." That the kids don't want me to show up, and we don't have room mothers, and we don't have as many opportunities for you to get in the building and get your hands dirty with the kids. But there are ways for parents to be involved, and we want to make sure that they're aware of them. The most important way of achieving that is improved communication. So, what I'm hoping to do is expand our social media presence this year. We have a Twitter account that, we're not very good. We don't come to the Rick Swanson level of tweeting. He does three or four an hour. We do three or four a month. So, we want to make sure that we're, that our presence is a little bit more, that we're out there a little bit more with the tweeting, and also look at other social media platforms. We know the district has a Facebook page. We're exploring whether or not the middle school should have its own Facebook page so that we can communicate with parents that way. And also, you know, in the style of our superintendent, I have a coffee and conversation with the principal scheduled for this Thursday. So, we're going to try to tailor that with topics that we know parents are interested in and that will bring them into the middle school. We tie that to a PTO meeting, and then we get them there for a couple of hours instead of just coffee. So, we're looking to make those types of moves to get parents to come to the middle school more often. But one of the things that we really need to do is identify what parents want and what they need. So, we're going to be developing a family survey with our school council this fall to be implemented this school year. I've looked at some existing surveys, and when our council starts to get together on a regular basis later this month, we're going to look at the items that other districts throughout the country have used to target where parents are looking for support and where they want to learn more. We have an idea of what we think is important to parents, but we really need to hear from them. So, we're going to be developing programs tied to that information. And that is last year and this year in a nutshell. Do you have any questions for me before I invite Mr. Reer to Ms. Janowitz up for the second half of our show?
I do, too.
Yes.
You've mentioned for the 1819 that you had looked at different scheduling models to get the flex block.
Yes.
Has that been implemented, or do you know when that will be?
We plan to pilot those, that scheduling model the second half of this year.
Okay.
Last year, we took the time to look at what some of our neighbors are doing. Hull is doing some really interesting things with their schedule, as is the Furness Brook Middle School in Marshfield. We felt that it wouldn't be wise to alter the schedule without giving some time to work with the teachers this year. And second half of this year, we think that we can pretty seamlessly introduce a flexible block of time in the day for kids, looking at probably twice per week. And it's pretty easy to accomplish. We looked at an old scheduling model that we used way back when, where we shaved a couple of minutes off of each block during the day, twice on Tuesdays and Fridays for a sustained silent reading program. That gives us about 30 minutes twice a week to do some different interventions, some Tier Two intervention work with kids, where we're not taking them out of the classroom. One of the things that we've encountered over the years is, it's really, it always comes down to, there's no time to do this work. We don't want to take them out of their classes to do it. We do so much of our counseling work during the lunch block, and you do not want to take a middle schooler from their lunch if you can avoid it. So, if we can find a more creative way to approach that, this is something that we're hoping to implement term three.
That's great.
Thank you.
And my other question was, you mentioned the parent survey surrounding transition from fifth to sixth grade.
Yes.
Has that gone out yet?
No, that's, the goal is for that to go out this fall. So, another job for our council to start working on this month.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say that I'm happy that you reported on the co-teaching and you explore more ways of, you know, improving that. That is something that the community have asked for many years, so I'm glad to hear that you are, you know.
Well, thank you. We have real skilled educators working together, and we want to give them the tools that they need in order to do the best job that they can. So, we're very fortunate to have that new position.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's, I know there's a lot of work, and I want to thank the school council and Derek and your group and the leadership there and all the teachers for putting as much work into this as possible and trying to meet the needs of all students. So, I commend their work as well.
Thank you very much. All right. Earlier, I mentioned Start With Hello Week, and we like to give you a little something more than just the school council report when we visit, because we're very proud of what our teachers and kids have done. So, Mr. Reer and Ms. Jay are going to just walk you through what Start With Hello Week was, what it looked like, and what it was all about. So, if you could advance.
Yeah, I'm going, can I just interject something?
Absolutely.
Because the school committee is supposed to approve the school improvement plan. So, before we do this.
Oh, sure, sure.
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it afterwards?
Yeah, yeah, so, thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that. Let's just get that out of the way.
[laughing].
Sorry, guys.
Just check that box.
Right, that's all. Thank you. But we all know that last year, we actually didn't vote on this, and, you know, it is required by Mass Law that the school committees actually approve the school improvement plans. So, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the improvement plans as presented. So, if we can get a motion, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to accept, I guess, the Hingham Middle School Improvement Plan for 2019-2020.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Those who oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. Push them fast.
Thank you very much. All right, now onto the good stuff. Dr. Austin?
All right. So, once again, this year, we held Start With Hello Week, which was really led by our counseling department. We did a great job of planning all of our activities and putting things together, well-supported by community members who came to greet kids in the morning. Thank you, Dr. Austin. Some of the other HPS administrators came as well. If you could jump to the next slide. Let's see some of these folks. And we asked our staff members to just come out and join us in the morning. It's usually the three of us administrators out there greeting kids in the morning, but we asked people to come out as well. And after a bit of surprise from the kids as to what was going on, because they weren't quite sure why everybody was out on the sidewalk, they really got into it, and they got used to seeing us each morning out there. So, we were graced by the presence of old friends from elementary school and new friends from central office.
It really was something that started last year by our council with teachers, and seemed like it was being woven into the school in a slow and small way. I was very, very impressed at how much traction it got this year, thanks to the counselors and teachers. And just things like this, without disrupting the school day or classes, just made that day a little bit more special for each one of these kids. Especially, you know, you can see Mr. Keyes there and a few other administrators, the smiles on their faces getting off the buses, and even peering out the buses as if they were waiting. Such a nice message.
If you have to skip your morning coffee, spend a little time with Mary Eastwood at 7:00 in the morning.
It's all the caffeine.
That's right.
All right. If you would, each day, we had a different theme through the week, too. So, this was tie or tie-dye day. Some kids rocked it and wore a tie with their tie-dye shirts. We also did Hingham Pride Day, wear your red and white.
Woke up kind, so you could wear your pajamas to school. You woke up kind, which of course, everybody did. And again, the kids were just, you know, motivated again by the counselors and teachers to get involved, and the participation was very, very high. I think that's Mr. Santopia in a cow costume.
Yeah.
His, Mr. Galvin did the same, which was their version of pajamas, and they got a lot of smiles from the kids. And again, you can see everybody lined up there greeting them as they come in.
And then, throughout the week, there were opportunities to leave kind messages around the building as well. On Tuesday, we asked every student in homeroom to write a positive message on a post-it note. And after school that day, some of the counselors and some student volunteers went around and made sure there was a post-it on every single kid's locker for them to come into in the morning.
So, here we are, two weeks later, and I would estimate 40% to 50% of those are still up. The kids don't take them down. They want to see it every time they go to their locker. Some have just fallen due to lack of it easy to attach. That, as you come in the front door, if you look up, you'll see that "Be Kind" written in sticky notes. Most of it is still there. You can see the letters and what they should be. And, you know, you would think the kids might, you know, shake their head in middle school, you know, just take it down, but they don't. They have completely embraced it, and then they leave it on their lockers. And I've seen some of the seventh and eighth graders will take sticky notes and put them on other people's lockers, moving them around a little bit and switching off the messages.
So, that's the end of our slideshow. But I think it was a really great experience. I think the faculty agreed that they joined in as well, and it was kind of fun to have a day of the week, and you sort of knew what your outfit was going to be based on the theme for the day. It helped us get into it a little bit as well, and the kids seemed to really enjoy it.
I think as Mr. Smith said, it wasn't just a Monday-through-Friday thing. It really set a tone for the school year, and it gives us something to go back to. And as he was speaking, it made me think about our handbook assemblies that we have at the beginning of each year with Mrs. Jay and I, and we focus on the importance of being kind and the importance to support each other. And sometimes, middle school can be hard, and you do need that friend. Maybe it's just the person that sits next to you in class, and you don't know them very well, but you still need to take that step and support each other. So, you know, as Mr. Smith was saying that, I really felt it was a good foothold. It's so much stronger than last year, where, you know, I've heard people say that to make change or develop a program, it really takes three years. I just can't wait to see what happens next year. Let's have a Hello Week.
And if you're not familiar with the Start With Hello Week program, it grew out of the tragedy in Sandy Hook several years ago, where parents recognized that these types of events, they happen when people feel isolated and alone, and they wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to make sure that no student feels all by themselves. So, do pajamas really have much to do with making people feel included? No, but it gave us something to go back to. And I was able to bust out my Ghostbusters pajamas for the second time. So, it's gimmicky, it's fun, but really, the kids get the message, and that is that we need to take care of each other at Hingham Middle School. We come back to that over and over again, so.
By the way, your picture did make to social media.
I understand that, yes.
That was great.
I'm just glad my daughters don't follow the Hingham Public Schools on Facebook.
Good news is, 20 years from now, she'll still be able to find it.
All right.
Well, on behalf of the school committee, thank you, you know, the leadership and the staff, everyone, for the great job that you do at the middle school, you know, getting our kids right at the middle and preparing them to high school. Obviously, you heard that the great success with MCAS at the high school level, but obviously, we give you guys a lot of credit for everything that you do at the middle school. So, congratulations. Keep up with the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go back and talk to the students?
You're always welcome.[1774.33] You're always welcome. But I just, I want to thank the teachers for being here this evening, and I know we have an early start. So if you, you know, don't feel the need to stick around if you don't have to. I know the rest of the agenda looks very...
Thank you. All right.
Take ten seconds and let them probably leave.
Yeah, let's take a couple of seconds.
That's good, because my computer got shut down really quick. So I'm going to reboot. Maybe. It's taking forever to.
If it shuts down.
If it shuts down. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you for coming.
All right. All right, moving on. Seven point three. To receive notification of the, oh, seven point two. To receive a draft of the fiscal year 2021 budget calendar. John, you can lead us through this?
Sure, absolutely. So you have in your files, the budget calendar for 2021 budget. Here we go again. We just completed nineteen, I think, or nineteen's about to be completely closed out. Twenty is sort of in progress right now, and we'll be rolling out the 2021 budget. We had our meeting on September 22nd, the school committee planning meeting. And you know, with that, that provides direction and a little bit of focus on where we want to go for the budget for fiscal twenty, twenty-one, excuse me. Then in October, I mean, the budget calendar gets longer every year because we sort of like put it more detailed steps, so everybody sort of understands all of the other steps that go along. But in October, really what it is, it's the rollout call going to the administrators, the principals, the directors, the facility and procurement manager, as well as the custodial supervisor and the transportation director, and the other sort of like responsible parties within the whole school system that have budgetary authority. Like all the directors and the resource teachers, they'll identify what their supply allocations are. So this year, we're going to do a little bit of change. In previous years, I've always sent them off hard copy. This year, we're going to put everything onto Google Drive. There's templates already set up. They'll, the letter will go out via email, but we're going to see everybody on Thursday, so they'll get the letter, a physical copy too, so that they know that the package is actually going to be in the, in Google Drive. And then, so that will be an effort that really takes up all of October. The middle of October to like early November, when I ask them for all of their information. So they'll give operating items that they're looking for. You know, the teachers, the resource teachers and department heads will identify the textbooks that they're looking for. And, you know, figure the planning, right? I mean, this is for like September of 2020, yeah, of September of 2020. So you're almost a year out, and everybody's looking at what their plan is going to be. We'll look at personnel needs for 2020, parent educator needs, teaching needs, special education needs. So a lot of, all the administrators will be doing all that work in October and early November when they submit their budgets. Also, in early November, we'll start activity with the long-range planning committee, who will go over all the capital requests that come in. So we'll have operating budget requests and capital requests that come in. And those will come in from principals, building leadership, as well as from facilities. And facilities and building leadership will talk during that process, so that we'll get a list of, here are the real things that we should be working on within the district or looking for funding for, for, you know, fiscal 2021. And as we know, I mean, it's so far in advance, we'll end up with that list of items from a capital perspective. And then when we get into twenty, right after we get the budget number, things will start changing, right? Will, other things will happen. We'll have to, you know, reallocate the monies. We'll have to figure, okay, we're going to postpone this, and we'll do that. But what we do, we will try, we will create a plan, and we'll try to stick to the plan the best we can.
John, can you do me a favor? Again, for those at home, they may not quite understand the difference between the operating budget and the capital budget. Can you just explain that again? Because there's a misconception out there that because we have, you know, more than half of the town, you know, budget as the operating, that we don't need any more money. They don't, some people may not understand that the capital is completely separate. Would you kindly just go over that?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to. So, yeah, from when, from school finance perspective, there's two, there's actually multiple components, but the two major ones that become an appropriation every year have to do with the operating budget and with capital. And both of those get combined together into one appropriation at town meeting for the school department. But in our operating budget, we're looking at items that are really repair and maintenance. There's not a whole lot of heavy-duty preventative maintenance. This is where we're in an operating mode. The year has begun. We have forty-three hundred kids in school, and stuff will happen to buildings. And we want to make sure that they don't lose school time or, you know, minimize school time. We'll have snowstorms that happen. We'll have all sorts of stuff that go on. So those will be items that, in the operating budget, that really represent facilities and maintenance-type expenses, okay? So those types of repairs are sort of included in an operating budget to get us back up and running. But then you may have larger capital items. And those larger capital items really are ones that we look for capital appropriation in the total general fund, okay? These aren't articles. The third way of getting funding is through articles. An example of an article might have been the clear story windows that we actually completed at the high school last year at a cost of some $500,000. That would sink the capital appropriation, because the town only appropriates 2.2 or anywhere but like maybe $2.5 million to capital in an annual appropriation. Going back to the operating budget, aside from capital, it also pays for like the logistics, all the buses, right, and those types of contracts. It pays for all of the teachers and all the par educators, all the support, all the educational needs within the school system for any given operating year, okay? So it's all the regular operating school. What does it take you to run a school? You have to have teachers. You have to have par educators. You have to have building leadership. You have to have support. You need to have nursing facility, you need to have nurses. We have extracurricular activities and athletic activities. We have to pay for energy. We have to pay for electricity. So if you thought about that in terms of your own home, it would be, hey, I'm running a house. I need to do all these things every year. We're running a school system, okay? Now beyond that, if all of a sudden, you know, you needed a major roof, right, and it's going to cost, you know, thousands of dollars, you know, that's not in your operating budget. That's not in the paycheck that you bring home every week and you fund the account with. That's actually something, hey, we're going to need a roof next year. Okay. So now you're either thinking of some other type of funding, or maybe you're going to cash in an investment, or you need to, you know, get to a bank or something to get more funding. We don't get to the bank. The town's our bank, you know, in terms of appropriation. But you could think about the two in that respect, right? One is everything you need to get by in a budgetary perspective for a year, and the other is, hmm, these are going to be big items that happen. Those are the capital ones. Hopefully, that explained it.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Okay. So in November, we'll start, so the administrators and, you know, they'll, and in the schools, they're going to give us all the operating things. And they're going to say, hey, my building maybe needs this, and my building maybe needs that. They'll discuss that with facilities. Facilities will say, hey, we got these big projects, but then we have twenty-eight custodians. So the twenty-eight or thirty custodians, those are sitting in the operating budget. But if we have some big work to be done, those will be on the capital list. Back to the budget calendar. So in November, we'll start talking about capital. We'll have an initial list from the field of all the capital items we need. We'll meet with the long-range planning committee. We have dates on this that really have to be determined, because we haven't determined, you know, what our cycle's going to be yet, okay? So once we get this budget calendar down, we'll make those TBD or, you know, to-be-determined dates in sync, so that we can get to a point and have a finalized list, so that at the beginning of January, we can present it to the school committee saying, these are all the capital items we think we need, because we'll end up taking that to the capital outlet committee. And that meeting will happen sometime in the middle of January. We kick, we've always kicked the school budget off at the beginning of the school year, okay? So the, so once we get the information back, we'll start compiling everything. And then, you know, we'll have discussions with central office administration, superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of special student services. And we'll come up with all the requests, and we'll sort of refine them and say, and they'll help do most refinement, and I'll take it in my head, say, okay, that's this much, that's this much, and sort of like compile the whole budget. And we'll spend all of December really doing that. We'll have a, the ability, and then I'll throw it into a common format, one format that we're all familiar with, with, you know, our budget book. And then we'll start our workshop sessions, okay? So on this calendar, I've set the first workshop session up for the ninth. The alternative would have been the second. I didn't know if we wanted to start the second. It's a little bit tight right after the New Year, so I thought that we could go a week. And I think the calendar will allow it. Some of this may be dependent upon when advisory comes out with what their calendar may be, okay? I think that, you know, we're, during January, we'll have our work sessions. So we'll have regular, we'll also have work sessions. And in those work sessions, we'll break the budget down, and we'll talk about the instructional platform, all the 2,000 series accounts. We'll talk about the facilities platform, the, you know, that's the energy, the transportation, the athletics, the health. We'll talk about those, and then we'll also have a session in those workshops, and we'll talk about special education and what those needs are. We can split those between, sometimes it's been three weeks, sometimes we'll have two sessions in one. We've got in the schedule, a total of four workshops, okay? And usually, the fourth one is sort of the one that, if we need it, we have another fourth one. In that schedule, as you see on here, the fourth one would be January 30th, okay? If that meets school committee approval, you know, if you're fine extending it to then. I think we're okay. We will also have to have a budget hearing, okay? So we'll have a budget hearing. And that could be at any time. And then you could either vote at the hearing, or you could delay for a couple of weeks for the budget vote. So we will have to have a budget vote, too. During that time, a new thing on this calendar that we're doing this year is November 16th, okay? We have always, in the past, not always, I mean, I think since I've been here, I think one year, we perhaps did not do any type of walk-around. But in all the other years, we've had a Saturday when we did a walk-around, because we wanted to show capital outlay of the board's selectmen, any advisory committee members, school committee members, the state of some facilities, and why we were asking for some capital dollars. We can still do something like that this year. However, when we had our planning meeting, we sort of talked about, can we change that formula a little bit, perhaps? Can we have that same group get together, but let's have more of a business meeting and combine it with some type of walk-around? So we've set that date of November 16th, and I've sent out a keep the date or save the date message to selectmen, advisory, to capital outlay, school committee. And, you know, we can, we're going to work on what that agenda will be, but it should be more of a flavor of, you know, here's the general education, here's what we're doing, here's what we're working with, and these are the types of things we need, and here's some facilities things that we need as well. I don't envision we'd be going around by bus, but it probably will be in an off-site location such as the high school. So that's something new, November 16th. And then we can, we can talk when we start with the long-range planning committee, or, you know, we could talk prior to that. Do we think we need a walk-around as well? You know, the Plymouth River windows, we went there and we showed that last year. We always have capital needs, but there's, you know, I mean, we, and we're all aware of Foster. So I'm not sure that there's a need for that, but everybody can think about that. And if we think we should do something, we want to get a save the date out, you know, within the next couple of weeks, I should.
Sure.
Let's see, what else on this calendar then? And, you know, so the calendar will take, take the, show the activity going right up to town meeting. In March, early March, selectmen will vote, advisory will vote. During that January, February, March timeframe, there'll be advisory committee meetings. There'll be ACES or advisory subcommittee, education subcommittee meetings, and we'll attend those. We'll attend selectmen votes, you know, to see what's happening. There's warrants. The warrant deadline is going to be January 20th this year, okay? Because that's what, it's supposed to be the 20th. Last year, it got extended to 21st, I think, because the 20th was on a Sunday. So, but this year, it should be January 20th. And that's where we will put in any warrant articles that we may need for bigger items. One example of a bigger item might, for sure, will be, I will need to put a warrant article in to have money moved from the insurance settlements over $150,000 back to the school department operating budget for the e-school flood. And probably a portion for the fire, too, because all of the fire expenses were not paid out of last year's fund, and we're incurring those this year, as well as we settle up all the insurance claims. So that's one type of article. Another might be if we intend to lease some additional vehicles for five-year, we may need an approval to do a five-year lease. Or if we have some big building needs, we may, you know, if we did windows for PRS, we'd probably need a vote for some feasibility money for PRS or something to that effect. So, but the warrant articles will identify what those are as we continue our discussions between November and, you know, really between the start right now and January 20th.
That's great. Should we plug in, I know that's not necessarily related to the budget directly, but, you know, Foster, that, you know, by December 12th, is that 12th or the 11th?
December 11th.
11th.
December 11th, yes.
Should we just plug it in that we expect an answer by that date?
Sure.
Then I think we ought to think whether we want to call for a special meeting, you know, even at Foster, to, you know, to go over, discuss, and hear people, you know, this citizens' feedback, so they know that we're on top of that, and then plan for the future. Because obviously, we have a little over a month after that to, you know, come up with a warrant article.
Right. I think that we should certainly put the Foster MSBA results that day when we anticipate those. And then from that readout, I think we could, I mean, the calendar may have to be altered. I don't know that we want to set any date or something to that, you know, when we may need them. You know, we'll look, we don't need any meeting.
We heard, we heard from them last year, a little earlier than the date expected, right?
Yeah, right.
Like a week before.
Because the agenda has to be posted.
They post the agenda.
So, you know, we probably will know. But I mean, what I can do down here is put the board result, you know, the board vote, the MSBA board vote day, you know, on that calendar, so everybody sort of is aware of it.
Great. Yeah, I want to take advantage that we're talking about the budget calendar. We have with us, and most of the meetings, Mr. George Dennis, the liaison to the advisory ACE, right? Is there anything you would like to add to the discussion concerning budget? You're very true advocate for us.
Schedule looks, looks fine to me, and I look forward to working with both the administration and the school committee to finalize the budget.
Great, thank you.
I'm sure I speak for my colleagues also.
Thank you.
I just have one date. I have a meeting on my calendar on October 15th with the school committee and selectmen. Should we plug that in there, too?
He mentioned, yeah, should we have that here?
That's the, that's the, that's the personnel board run, right?
Oh, okay, so it's, okay.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a budget meeting per se.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We don't need to vote on this, just present.
Actually, if you would vote on the budget calendar, yeah, because I think we were calling for a vote for the budget calendar.
Okay.
So you approve it. The other thing, I put draft guidelines in your folder, and I put it redline version, because this is like from last year, right? So, I mean, the guidelines, I presume not a lot changes. You think through and you say, are there other things that we should ask the committee to consider? So I've made a few suggested changes to it. So if you could look at that, and then next time, we could discuss, and, you know, you could approve guiding principles. Or at that point, you can tell me, hey, we want to add this, and then make the approval, so that we can sort of let everybody out in the field know, hey, these are the principles that the school committee has voted. And that's why we want to vote on this, too, because this is the calendar that the school committees agree to.
We would not vote on that right now?
Well, no, vote on the calendar, not the guiding principles.
Okay, very good.
And no, too, I mean, if we had to change this at some point, you could do another vote. Like, let's just say, if all of a sudden, everybody's accelerating things, and we have to have that first meeting on the second, we can change it.
Sure.
You could vote it again.
All right, can I get a move?
Can I just, can I go back to Gary's question, John? I happen to have in my calendar for the 15th as well, at 7:00 PM. Does that not involve the school committee?
It does.
It does?
It does.
But it's not a budget.
And what's the, what is the topic for that evening?
It's an executive session.
Okay, thank you. So that is a, that is on that night?
It is on.
Yes, it's just not on the calendar.
It's just not the school department's.
Any comments? May I get a motion to approve the budget calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget calendar as presented. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget calendar as presented.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Are in favor, say aye. Are opposed, say nay. As have it passed.
Let me, can I just, as presented is by including Foster MSBA.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yeah.
But, am I in there? No. Item 7.3, to receive notification of the Hingham Middle School overnight field trip to Quebec City on May 1st to May 3rd, 2020. Dr. Austin, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll just briefly do that. I, it's my understanding this is an annual trip, taken by the French Club, I believe, is.
Eighth-grade students who take French. It's not a twelfth per se, but they're in the French class.
Thank you. And I have received the appropriate paperwork on that, and the assurances that all things have been followed, so I have approved that for the middle school.
Great, thank you. And a vote is not required, so that's good.
Yep.
Bon voyage. Thank you. All right. Item 7.4, to receive notification of the appointments of Stephanie O'Brien, long-term substitute teacher at South School, effective August 26, 2019. Gabrielle Parker, accounting assistant at Central, effective September 24, 2019. Nora McCormick, Math tutor at Hingham Middle School, effective September 23, 2019. Jeffrey Swell, teacher assistant at Kids in Action, effective September 23, 2019. Carrie Thomas, transition room coordinator at the Hingham Middle School, effective September 23, 2019. And September higher of paraeducators, David Howie, Ashley O'Regan, and Steven Sadowski at the Hingham High School. Also, Nicole Cannon and Laura Berry at the South School, and Jennifer Beacony at Foster School. That's pretty much that. And then, we have item 7.5, to receive notification of the advancement of the salary scale, scale of Rebecca Cotton to M. Torri, step five as of September 1, 2019. Then, we have item 7.6, to receive notification of the resignation of administrative assistants Diane Robin Smith of PIS, effective October 8, 2019, and Christine White, H. Hingham High School, effective September 13, 2019. In addition to that, the resignation of paraeducators of Alex Barber at the Hingham Middle School, and Tara Tommy Barry at South, both effective September 20. We wanted to welcome the new staff, and also wish all the best to those that are leaving our school system. Item eight, other items as may not reasonably be known 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Do we have any other items? Item nine, subcommittee and project reports. Let's start with NESS.
I have East School PTO meeting is this Wednesday, October 9th, at 6:45, that I will be at. It's at the Historical Society, and their school committee meetings will start commencing after their elections. And I just wanted to make a note, I was at East, as well as the other elementary schools. There was a woman from the League of Women Voters who wanted to donate the book, One Vote, Two Vote, I Vote, You Vote, and it's all about civic participation. So, the kids got to receive all of that, and was well-received in each of the communities, and they're actually thinking about incorporating it into their program. So, wanted to make mention of that. And then, community outreach, we have added a second coffee slash cookies with Dr. Austin on October 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00, in the school department conference room. And then, we've got our next meeting on October 23rd.
Great. Could you just, you know, mention that coffee with the superintendent again? Because, so there's this, the first?
So, the first one is October 15th. It is from 10:00 to noon, and that's going to be at the Community Center. And the second one is the evening one, which is going to be 6:00 to 8:00, and that's going to be here, in this room.
That's great. And you guys have been doing a great job in regional.
We promoted it everywhere, and there's accessibility information. So, to the extent anybody needs accessibility information, that's plastered all over Facebook.
Great. And Libby, great job with that flyer.
Yes.
All right. Libby, do you have anything?
I do. So, I will be attending my first South School Council meeting on October 23rd. I did miss the one in September. I won't actually be able to go to the PTO meetings, because they're the first Fridays of the month, and I work on Fridays. I was hoping maybe somebody might be able to go.
I'll do it.
Thank you, and update them on school committee happenings, and then come back and report to us what's happening with their PTO.
Great, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that a lot.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to go back.
I want to go. I'm jealous. The Hingham Education Foundation had a really wonderful coffee and conversation at the Community Center on October 1st, and it was a very educational presentation given by Dr. Jamie and Katie Roberts. They were just presented what's been happening with the computer science immersion over the past two years, and then what's going to happen this year. And I want to commend them on their fundraising skills. They're very ambitious, and their goal is to raise $180,000 this year, $1,000 for each school day. So, I encourage everybody to donate to the Hingham Education Foundation. And then, I was just also going to say about community outreach, what NESS did, so I will reiterate, please come to our coffees and conversations with Superintendent, either Tuesday during the day, or Thursday during the evening.
Great. Dr. Shray, do you have anything?
Looking forward to the first PRS council meeting, which will be on Monday, the 21st, at 2:30.
Great. Carrie?
I have some stuff. So, for policy, we will be meeting tomorrow at 11:00 AM. As I mentioned earlier, the school committee and Dr. Austin participated in a Mass Association of School Committees workshop last Monday. It was really informative, and will help us start off on a great foot. So, two things that came out of this, the policy's going to be working on. One is, based on every, input from everybody, the administrators and the school committee at the meeting, we're going to start drafting a set of norms that, as far as how we all work together. And it's some, we talked about it in the meeting, and Policy's going to start drafting something tomorrow, and then we'll bring it to the full committee and get input, and put that together. That's something that a lot of communities do, and it seems like it would be really helpful. Another thing is, we, as I mentioned earlier, the workshop idea, it's something that, it's common practice in a lot of districts, and it's an opportunity for, to really delve into specific issues in a really, in an informal way. It's been really productive for a lot of communities. So, we've talked about, about doing our next meeting, actually, on October 21st, to be a workshop to create a year-long agenda. Again, it'll be, it's still going to be public, open to the public and posted, and complies with open meeting law, but it would be off-camera, so that's the only thing. So, the Special Education Subcommittee met on Thursday, November 3rd, and, sorry, October 3rd, and we went over some subcommittee goals, which were to support the goals of the Special Education Department, as established by the Special Education Director, and to inform the Special Education Director of the community's needs and issues that arise. We had an update from Dr. Venice about some, three areas of need. So, we talked about that. We talked a lot about space concerns, so she has some great ideas for programs, but we'd figure out where we're going to put them. And so, so that's something that should be on everyone's radar, too. And, last but not least, is Hingham Middle School. The school council met last Thursday to go over, kind of get a preview of the school improvement plan, and the next one will be on October 21st.
Great. And I attended the Hingham High School as council this past, the TOD, and they have a lot of great things happening, and they, one of the things that they're looking to implement and expand is the freshman advisory program. So, you know, they're working towards doing that. Principal Swanson introduced a survey where he's asking for feedback from various students, including the student council, whether they, you know, should be, you know, certain amount of time, and how they will be implementing that. So, there is a lot of discussion around that. So, just keep your ears open, and there will be a lot, a lot to come. Long Range Planner, we didn't meet last month, we don't have anything new happening. Just wanted to mention to you that we have the convention coming up for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, that's in November. You know, I am, you know, interested in attending, I hope you also do. If you are, make sure you address, and let PIM know that you're interested in going. Last year, because we actually didn't act timely, we felt to elect a delegate. I intend to, to, you know, respectfully ask the chair that I'm appointed the delegate, but if anyone else is interested in going as a delegate, you know, just notify her, or talk to me also, because that way, I don't have to be a delegate. A good thing of being a delegate, that we have a vote, and, you know, is one of the evenings that they meet and vote on their resolutions. By the way, there were several resolutions that you wanted to, if you, I'm sure you got that booklet, look at them. If you think that we should, as a school committee, endorse some of those resolutions, they are always looking for endorsement of them. And we can discuss them, and go there, and say, now, we, on behalf of the school committee, we are in favor of these resolutions, okay? Is there anything else before we move on? So, our next meeting is, is October 21st. It is a workshop, so it's not going to be televised, just be aware of that. It is open to the public, so all are welcome to attend. And just, you know, a reminder once again, that on the 15th, we are meeting with, you know, the advisory and Board of Selectmen. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. May I get?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. As have it. Mission accomplished.